Come out here and look at these trees. And I'm like, yeah, I'm looking at trees. I'm trying to like.
He doesn't care.
I come in and he goes, you can't go and look at my attic. Because where my naked son is sleeping.
All right. Um.
I'll tell him this story later.
We're calling the meeting to order. Uh, June 6th, before we start, we take a moment of silence to commemorate the 160,000 Allied Forces that landed in Normandy 75 years ago today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ms. Zembo, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kusik.
Present.
Mr. Deeks.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lott is out. Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mrs. Fargo-Heckner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present except for Mr. Lott.
Thank you. Um, so I have a, excuse me, a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th.
Motion to approve by acclamation.
Mr. Kusik, Mr. McGee, uh, on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, none. Courtesy of the floor, I have one person who signed in, uh, at this point, Kenneth Tesk?
Teske.
Teske?
Yeah.
Uh, would you please come up?
Yes.
And, uh, you have, uh, five minutes?
I know.
Oh, well, it doesn't start until you start talking. If you could, your name then for the?
I know it. Okay.
Okay.
Kenneth Teske, hi Bob. Anyhow, um, so I was here back in, uh, May and, uh, I guess I'm gonna have to beat a dead horse here. My issue was back then, and it still is today, was the property located between 124 and 126 Main Street in Glendon. That's a Glendon Hotel. I'm trying to get answers. Uh, I'm just a regular guy. Unfortunately, I happen to live over there and nobody seems to know who's responsible. You know, I go to, I go to town council, I go, hey, guys, we gotta do something with this, it's collapsing. Okay, the second floor has now collapsed into the first floor, the ground level. It's brutal, it's a mess, and it's unsafe. Well, we don't know who owns it. I go, guys, you can't tell me that. Well, we think the county owns it. I said, okay, you think the county owns it. All right, so that was back in January, so, January 10th, 2019, I called the county controller, Steve Barron, and he told me that the hotel was in repository. But he also stated that it's slated to be, uh, for demolition in the spring. Okay, well, now we're going in the summer and there's no change. You know, I, you know, I, I called, uh, Mr. Robert Freeman, his assistant, Dominic, said that the hotel was a unique situation. It sure is a unique situation. It's a dire situation, but it is what it is.
Great answer.
But we gotta get it down. Listen, uh, you know, I, I'm just looking for accountability, man, something's gonna happen. You know, and, you know, just things, and it's gonna collapse. Somebody went down there with caution tape and plastic, uh, horse barriers. That's not gonna do anything to keep that building from falling into road. And I'm just saying, if you, if the county owns it, can't we get this thing down?
Well, we can clear that up, if I may.
Yeah, I'm all ears.
Right away, do we own the property?
We do not.
All right. Who, do you know who owns the property, Mr. Executive?
I do not, but I can find out.
Can, can, how long can it stay in the current condition it is? Listen, Sal Panto wouldn't put up with this for five seconds. That building would've been down a long time ago if it was here in the city of Easton. And I'm not here, I'm not picking on any of you guys.
Well, I'm just, I'm curious about the borough itself. I, I was gonna.
No, it's really the borough's responsibility.
Yeah, I mean.
It is. No, it's the borough's responsibility.
Okay. Because, you know, every time I go to the borough, they say, here, Ken, here's our problem, Ken, we need to get a grant. They need to get a grant for writing a freaking parking ticket. Come on. We can't keep coming up with that, we need a grant. That's getting old.
Well, I, no, and I, I wanted you, I wanted, I thought at least we could get one answer for you tonight.
Well, that's.
That the county does not own it.
Right.
Uh, I would, I would defer to anybody up here who would get, wanna give you advice. I, I, I know it's the borough and they're blowing you off, but does anybody have anything they wanna say to this gentleman from our perspective that could help them? I, I don't, I mean.
I mean, other than finding out who the actual owner is.
I don't understand why Steve Barron was, would speak to me in January and not return my calls, and I'm not picking on Mr. Barron, but not, not return my calls in, let's say, April when the spring was approaching.
This spring?
Because he has a different job now.
Yeah. When I spoke to him, it was in January, January 10th, 2019.
He had that job.
And.
He was a controller.
I'm not here to pick on anybody, like I said.
In January.
This guy's got to do something with this building. I, I don't, can, can you guys have any direction with Glendon and say, hey, listen, can, can we do something here, Glendon? Because we have a serious situation with this building.
When I get to do my report, I'll tell you what, what I have to.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Well, all right.
We're really not supposed to talk to you, but this is your time.
I'm, I'm suspending some of the things because.
My five minutes is coming to an end.
No, it's all right, I interrupted you. You, you're the only one on and you could, could come before us before, I remember you. And fairness, yeah, that's, it's, it's an issue. I think we agree with you.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
That you can't have a building that falling down that's there, but I mean, uh, we'll hear from the executive when he gives his report, what he's found out and maybe.
Well, that would be great.
Okay.
So I'll stick around and.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Feel free, stay as long as you want.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
It's a popcord.
All right, is there anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to the county executive's report. Mr. Executive.
So, um, I too am deeply concerned about the Glendon Hotel's dilapidated condition, uh, but as we said, the county does not own the Glendon Hotel. Uh, the county has very limited responsibility with respect to the Glendon Hotel and it is nowhere near enough responsibility for us to be responsible for the demolition, for example. The, even though the Glendon Hotel remains in the repository, the owner is still the owner of record, the previous owner. So that, that, that's the legal title situation. But again, as I said, I'm concerned too. So I asked, and, and maybe, uh, Ms. Fargo-Heckner can address this in her, uh, in her report later in, in the meeting, um, I've asked that the general purpose authority, uh, take a look at the Glendon Hotel site as a place for potential affordable housing. And that's a, that's a project that potentially the general purpose authority, uh, can take on and, uh, but that will be up to them. I mean, we've asked them to talk about, they, they, it was an agenda item for them and maybe Ms. Fargo-Heckner could tell us about that. But that, that's the, uh, that's the extent of county involvement to this day and I, and I think it's pretty aggressive considering, we really can't do anything. This is really within Glendon's pur.
As a point of information, just because the gentleman's here, he could go to the recorder of deeds to find out who owns the property and send them, and you, Steve, you corresponded with him yourself?
I don't know, I'm just out of my mind.
Uh, Palmer.
I do have a statement.
All right, well, uh.
I'm nobody.
Well, no, no, no.
That's not true.
That's not, uh, no, you're not nobody. It's just you're in a, you're in a bind, we don't, there's not much we can do. Uh, the exact, as the executive has pointed out, it really falls on Glendon's hands unless the, we develop, uh, unless the GPA gets involved, but short term?
And, and just, just so, just so we're, we all have the context for how difficult this potentially is, we would probably need to take it by eminent domain. Um, and he would, uh, my suspicion is, um, to the extent that the owner is upright, I don't even, I don't even know if the owner's living at this point.
Yeah, that could be true.
Um, we would probably have an extended court battle, which would be the GPA's battle, not the county's battle, so.
I, I, I hear what you say, but about the GPA, that might be the best route to go if, if we have to be involved in any capacity.
But if we know.
Maybe the only route.
Yeah.
But if we know who the owner is, can't we put pressure on the owner to demolish the building?
We need, we need that light program.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're not The Sopranos, we can't do that.
No, I'm not talking like, you know, pressure, I'm just saying, could you please demolish your building? Like, reach out to the guy.
Go knock on his door.
I'll go knock on his door.
Mr. Kusik would like to dive in on this. We're being, we're, that's okay, go ahead, Mr. Kusik.
Is there an assessed, and this might be something to look up, is there an assessed value on the property and has the owner requested a reassessment based on the poor condition of it?
Uh, there is, and I don't know the answer to your second question.
I bet you're so taxied.
I doubt it though, but we can check.
All right, Mr. Executive, I'm sure you have more.
I do, um, and I, and I have some, I, I think, really good news. Uh, and, and I have to thank you. Without the backing of county council, in my quest to have equity and fairness in the by-county relationships that we have, Lanta, Planning Commission, LVE DC, and others, we couldn't get anywhere. If they could come here and go, eh, he's just a squeaky wheel, you know, just give us whatever we ask you for, I, I, I would have no leverage. So I wanna thank county council because recently, and owing to Owen O'Neil, the executive director's, uh, credit, I wanna, I wanna praise Mr. O'Neil for working with us, um, we're going to get a bus stop at Greysdale specifically for Greysdale employees.
Okay.
We are going to get a flex bus stop for our West Eastern work release facility. This is a huge deal. Um, and, uh, it, it will benefit the residents of West Eastern, it will benefit our inmates on work release, and, and so, these are inefficient stops for Planta. Um, it, there'll be less riders than they'd like to see and, but it's, but it's a good public purpose. And since we only get less than 40% of the benefit of 50% of the money, I think they could, they can take a little bit of a hit on that. But I think even more importantly, um, I wanna talk about another, um, change that's happening. And this is, uh, from Mr. O, uh, from Mr. O'Neil, and it was, uh, written by Tina Smith. But he writes, "Based on your lamonts identifying the slate belt as a priority location for service changes, we have also made some enhancements to our slate belt flex route in terms of the times of services available as well as the locations to which a rider can travel. We have also enhanced the slate belt flex service to allow riders to call for a ride up to two hours prior to the desired travel time rather than a cutoff of the day before, as was previously the case." So, we, we are, we are making real progress in that regard and we appreciate Lanta working with us and will continue to, uh, work with, uh, Lanta in, in order to make more improvements. And, um, again, thank you for your support because without it, we wouldn't make any progress in these endeavors at all. Teladoc, we have saved, so far since we've had Teladoc, $430,661. That is, if you bear with me, that's an average of $517 per call to Teladoc. Our, uh, women are using it at 61% to the males 39%. And 75% of our employees are rating Teladoc as excellent, 12% as good and 12% as poor. So I think that's really, really great. Um, so far this year, that, that, for, what number did I give you?
For 63.
Yeah, that was a total number. So far this year, we've saved $205,249. So Teladoc's really working for us. It's working for us and it's working for our, uh, our employees. The forensic center, thanks in large part to the work of Mr. Dirtenger, has received conditional final approval from Upper Nazareth Township. So we are very close, we'll be sending out the bids for contractors on Friday. We are very close to be able to sticking shovels in the ground and getting, uh, your forensic center that's taken 30 years to build, built. Um, and I, and I, and I wanna single Mr. Dirtenger out, he is, um, single-handedly, uh, by force of sheer will, pushing this project forward in a way that, um, public projects normally don't get done. So, um, he's probably saying, don't say anything else because, you know, what happens if we stall? But, well, then, then I'll get him moving again. But, uh, he's, he's doing a great job, so we have conditional final approval. You're gonna have forensic center, I think, within the next year and a half, two years. Uh, finally, P3, uh, again, I don't wanna step on, uh, Ms. Fargo-Heckner's report, uh, from the, uh, GPA. You went to the GPA meeting, right? Okay, so, I'm just checking, I'll make sure you were there. Um, as you know, we all remain committed to seeing this through. We wanna get the bridges that need to be fixed, fixed, get the bridges that don't belong in the P3 out and move forward and get a discount from those bridges that get out that is fair to the taxpayers. Uh, we're still working on that, as you know, the county has very little ability to influence that process. Uh, the GPA, I think, is, um, in a much stronger position than it has ever been, uh, vis a vis this contract and moving forward, I, I think, I, I am cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to do this. I am cautiously optimistic that we will get the bridges out, we will get a fair credit and we will get this project done. And I think we will all, when we do that, we can all, uh, we can all take credit for that. Um, the good news is, Mr. Dirtenger and I were out today and Bridge 63 Anatomy is being worked on. So finally, we have some, we have some progress on a bridge moving forward. And that concludes my report, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Are there any questions, Mr. Kusik?
Um, since we're talking about demolition, um, is there any update on the Melitus project?
Yes. Um, no one responded to the, to the bids. We had no, we had no response. At first, it was because all three, we'll call them three phases of the project were intertwined and no one company does all three of those things, demolition, paving, and the necessary geotechnical work that has to, has to firm up the side of the hill. I mean, because we're on that, part of the reason we're demolishing Melitus is 'cause it's about to slide down the hill. So there needs to be, well, I'm exaggerating for purposes of making a point, but it is moving that way. Um, so, we now have several, we, we then directly contacted, per the administrative code, um, companies to come and do the demolition. We've had several quotes and Mr., my understanding is Mr. Emili's in the process of getting it, uh, someone in to demolish it in the very near future.
Any other questions?
But it's going to be a more complicated project than we thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Warner.
Executive, this is just, uh, some information might help our, can I? Uh, I have a phone number and then maybe a call.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Her name is Teresa Sidor, S-I-D-O-R. The Glendon Secretary, yeah.
Teresa Sidor. Yeah, she's the borough secretary.
Yes. She'll help you hopefully get the, well, just a thought. You've done that.
I, he's the reason I'm here for some.
Oh, okay, all right.
He's the borough secretary in 2019.
Just a, just trying.
I'm suspending things for a sec. Do you, have you gone to a meeting of the Glendon Borough Council?
We have one for lots of meetings.
And you've told these, there are, I don't know how many there are at Glendon, but, uh...
They're, they're once, they're monthly meetings.
Okay, I didn't know if you were getting.
They're in a kind of nature, I'll tell you that. They really are.
And this is not?
There's just finger points.
Come on now.
I don't wanna be nasty, but, but there's, there's just finger points.
All right.
You want them?
Nothing that's done there.
All right.
Zero, a lot of finger points, which is what led me to come to you guys.
Well.
The county where, and I, I know I'm a little podium, but, uh, this guy did allegedly own the hotel.
Sir, you should come back so we could have, and we can all hear you, if you really want to.
Is it okay, I mean?
He suspended.
He, he can come up. I, well, yeah, he can come up, come on.
All right.
You have a minute. I mean, here's the, here's the bottom line, there's nothing really we can do for you. I mean, we could stick Ms. Rinsky on him, but I don't know if she wants to do that.
No, can you not put a protest?
No, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm being very serious with you.
No, I know.
There's nothing we can do. At the end of the day, it's all gonna come down to Glendon and even if the GPA was to get involved, it's still gonna involve Glendon and the owner and a lawyer or two.
The, the previous owner or still, maybe is still the owner, Albert B. Rutherford, it isn't Palmer. Listen, here's what I have. Somehow, a Mr. Sawyer, he says he bought the parking lot to the Glendon Hotel. This is getting crazier by the second. He says he purchased the, the parking lot of the Glendon Hotel off the county. Now, listen, I'm only going back.
I understand.
This isn't hearsay, this is what I was personally told.
Was it a sheriff's ceremony?
Ma'am, I, I don't know.
Uh, Mr.?
I think they have a parking lot.
Mr. Mr. Teske.
There's a parking lot in front of the place.
But we're, you know, you have the name now with that lady. We'll, if there's anything we can do, we'll look into it here, but.
I, I.
I'm gonna have to bend it 'cause we gotta go on there with the meeting.
It's okay, I, I thank you, guys, all of you, I really do.
No, no, fair enough.
It's, it's an issue, and we'll get to the bottom of it somehow and I don't know how, but I'll, we'll keep working on it.
Albert B. Rutherford.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, um, I don't have any old business on the agenda. Does anyone have any old business they wanna address? Seeing none? Uh, we're gonna go to new business. And the first is the introduction of an ordinance amending the 2019 Northampton County budget. Uh, does that, somebody to sponsor that? It's just the introduction?
I will.
Ms. Heckner will sponsor it, Mr. McGee is going to second it, and I would assume we'll be discussing that at our next, uh, meeting or a public hearing. All right, and then we go to the, um, the second item is the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the Northampton East, County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Lease Approximately 1,563 Square Feet of Office Space Identified as 306 Butch Town Road Bethlehem, Pennsylvania from the Township of Lower Nazareth, a Pennsylvania Municipal Corporation, 623 Municipal Drive, Suite 200, Nazareth, Northampton County, Pennsylvania." Is there someone who would be willing to?
What, yeah, what does that mean?
Uh, well, I'm, and then, well, here you go, Peg, I'm gonna give Mr. Kusik the introduction and you the second, how's that?
There you go.
What is, can we ask questions about this or no?
We're gonna have public debate at the next meeting. Now we're just introducing it.
And someone introduced it? Did anybody second it?
You mean?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So we'll write down your questions in the next meeting, you can, you can hammer whoever you wanna hammer. All right, uh.
I'm gonna interpret it.
Then the third item is a consideration of, uh, an emergency procurement request resolution. I am going to introduce this, uh, because of, uh, just the nature of it. Whereas, well, the administrative code, I'm gonna do shorthand and you can ask questions. Whereas the administrative code, section 13.11, emergency procurement states, notwithstanding any other provisions of this code, the county executive or his designee may or may make or authorize others to make emergency procurements when there exists a threat to public health, welfare, or safety under emergency conditions, provided that such emergency procurements shall be made with such competition as is practicable under the circumstances. The county executive shall present an emergency procurement notice to the council president regarding the specifics of the emergency and the need to avoid the public procurement process. Uh, now therefore be it resolved at the end that Northampton County Council concurs with administration purchase a facility-wide page system for Greysdale as set forth in attachment number one, and you have attachment number one. I believe it was Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, I spoke with the county executive, uh, and he informed me that we had a situation at Greysdale where the paging system, uh, was kaput. It didn't work anymore. And being that we know the nature of Greysdale and we just can't have that happen, happen at Greysdale, I concurred with his decision. I mean, he, he has the right under the, under the, uh, charter, the administrative code and to do that, to do it. But he did talk to me about it and I, I agree. So, uh, I don't know if you wanna say anything to that at all, other than what it said. We have a resolution now in front of us, uh, just to, uh, basically concur in general as a, as a governing body. So I'm introducing the resolution. I don't know if anybody has any discussion or... All right. No discussion, seeing none, call for the roll.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Heckner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kusik.
Yes.
Mr. Deeks.
Yes.
Pass a five vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. All right. Uh, now, the next I have is a consideration of a resolution amending, resolution number 143-2018. And Ms. Heckner, would you please take this? It's the, uh, it's senior senator of Northampton.
Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the county of Northampton that approval is given to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging, Pennsylvania Senior Community Center Grant Program, not to exceed the amount of $150,000. If awarded, the grant will be effective for 365 days from the date of execution. That the county executive and DHS are authorized to execute and file the application and provide any assurances and/or certifications or additional documents that may be requested.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, excuse me, it's call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Heckner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Deeks.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Pass a five vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Now this next will warm the cockles of some hearts, I think. Consideration of a Certificate of Termination Resolution. The Higher Education Authority and the Hospital Authority. Uh, we'll start with the Higher Education Authority. Mr. McGee, would you please do the honors?
Would you like the full red or the white?
No, no, I think we're pretty well aware of.
Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the certificate requesting termination is hereby approved and shall be forwarded to the Department of State to evidence the hospital authority termination in the department records.
This is the higher ed.
Oh, the higher ed? Uh, we got it mixed up. Okay, they were stuck together and then we moved them around. We'll start over.
It's okay. It's okay. Who read that one?
This was the higher ed that I, that I read. Yes, it was. They both look exactly the same.
It's okay.
This was the higher ed that I read. Yes, it was. They both look exactly the same.
Yes.
And to clarify, it is the higher ed one.
All right, yes. Now, is there any discussion on the higher ed resolution? I only have one question which would apply to both. Is there any money in their budgets remaining?
No. It's been transferred.
It... That's finished. That's been done. Thank you. That's the only question I had. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
All right. There is a adjustment that must be made. The solicitor pointed out to me. Both of them say "hospital" at the end. And it... That has to be amended to higher ed.
The first one I read.
Yes. So, that's why there was...
They both got the second page.
All right, so...
That's all right.
So, it's, yeah, a Scribner's error. Oh. Anyway, so what we just passed was, in fact, the higher ed. Okay. And that'll be resolved in the final resolution. Now, Mr. McGee, the Hospital Authority.
Which we know is correct.
It should be.
Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the certif... The certificate requesting termination is hereby approved and shall be forwarded to the Department of State to evidence the Hospital Authority termination in the department records. So moved.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion?
Um, yeah.
Mr. Cusick.
I do about the last one. We can't just go and change it. There should have been a motion to amend that one.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
And then a vote on an amendment and then a vote on the amended resolution.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passed by vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Now we're clean. Fair enough. Well, technically speaking.
So, I'm uncomfortable with saying we're just going to change it.
All right. Now...
We didn't vote on it.
I know. All right, no. Now, we're going to go to your next one. I don't have a problem with what you're saying. Mr. McGee, would you introduce the resolution? We certainly can go down that road. I mean, you know, I'm...
No.
We didn't get...
Because I know what's going to happen.
I did it already, but I'll do it.
Next meeting, we're going to come back here, we're going to have to do an amended resolution.
Read it because we never got a motion on it.
And I would prefer that something be done about the one...
All right. So, this one is... This is the one on the Hospital Authority?
Yes.
Okay. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the certificate requesting termination is
Either the one that was just passed or this... Something needs to be rectified here.
hereby approved and shall be forwarded to the Department of State to evidence the Hospital
That's all I'm saying.
All right. Well, let's rectify it right now. We're going to throw the Scribner out. I can't stretch that enough.
So, let's see.
Authority termination in the department records.
It's a motion to amend.
So, what we're going to do is make a motion to amend to change the first one where it So moved. Thank you. said "hospital" to "Higher Education Authority." Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, please.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
That's what the first one was.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes, in line with the rest of the resolution.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
All right.
Yes.
Is there a motion to amend?
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
The first resolution.
Passes by vote of eight to zero.
I just made a motion.
Thank you. Lori just did. Now, we'll go to the, excuse me, consideration of a resolution in support of Restore Pennsylvania.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Cusick will second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, we're voting on the amendment. Mr. McGee, Economic Development, do you want to run with this? Just the amendment. Then we'll call a roll.
Sure.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Would you like the whole resolution read?
Mr. Kuzic.
I don't need it the whole resolution read.
No?
Somebody... Does somebody want the entire resolution read?
Okay.
Seeing no one, go ahead and...
Now therefore...
How about it?
Be it resolved that the Northham... Well, Northampton County Council does hereby urge the Pennsylvania General Assembly to support Restore Pennsylvania. We brought this up in committee and we moved it to full council vote. So moved.
All right. Is there any discussion on this?
Could anyone tell me where this is coming from or what?
It's Governor Wolf's.
Know anything more about it?
Mr. McGee or...
It came out of the...
Not too long ago, we had a tax increase for infrastructure and now what the papers say that money's being used for state police and a myriad of other things.
That's not what this is for.
Where is this four and a half billion coming and what's it for there?
Well, I think a lot of this is going to come from some of the initiatives that the governor's been talking about during the budget season.
For infrastructure.
This 4.5 billion...
And it is for... It's earmarked for infrastructure.
But it comes from a natural gas severance tax that he would like to implement. It's largely funded by the natural gas...
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes.
He doesn't have the money in his pocket until he gets the severance tax.
No, it's kind of dependent on that. And the more you read about it, the more... A lot... I mean, there's a lot of good things that Restore PA is going to... Wants to do.
Right, it's all...
Funding, flooding plans, MS4, farmland, open space preservation, abandoned mine drainage mitigation, brownfield remediation, that kind of stuff. But a lot of this, this 4.5 billion or dollars is going to that cracker plant as well that they're putting out in western Pennsylvania. So, a lot of this benefits not necessarily here and largely this was... This plan was produced with the guidance of Royal Dutch Shell, which is problematic in itself.
Well, if you read the resolution, it does explain some of your... Some of your answers specifically.
I read it. What's the cracking thing? I don't know.
A cracker plant is where they take the wet gas that they extract and they divide it up into like propane, protein, and they sell it off. It's largely going to be used towards plastic manufacturing, which is not in Pennsylvania's future.
There's also some earmarked dollars here for... Well, it doesn't say specifically, but to remove lead and other contaminants from communities.
Yeah, but I'd like to know where the money is. Show me the money.
Peg, we've been down this road before.
We don't know if...
We're saying... The state's saying we're going to do this and we're saying, hey, we support it and we'd like some of the money if and when you ever do this.
Yeah, I'm going to Florida.
So, yeah, you'll be in Florida. What do you care?
Okay.
No, I mean, you know this. We've... It's another plan that the state has and we're saying, by all means, please do it. We'd like some money.
You should have severance tax on cracking plants. It's another thing to put on your campaign promises.
Peg is speaking out tonight.
We'll talk about land banks.
No, no. It's... That's what you're pegging. You're right. That's what it's about. Whether you think it's a good idea or not, that's another matter.
It's all wonderful stuff.
Yeah, no, well, you know how many times we pass? I love my mother's stuff.
It's not so.
No.
This program has come up at C cap and I think there's general support for the expenditures that are outlined in this program, but I think the question mark has always been the revenue side. And as long as the impact fee is maintained in place, I believe that C cap doesn't necessarily have a position on this particular program. So, there is... You know, it's really up to us if we want to support it or not. We wouldn't be bucking our statewide organization either way.
Yeah, I mean, there's no... It's not unanimous, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Cusick. That's why the association's pretty much neutral.
Yeah.
As Ms. Ferraro was pointing out, there are members of the state legislature who don't necessarily think... Get it with the way they want to get the funds may be the way to do it, but...
I guess, true thing. So, I do have a question on the revenue side and even some in here, you know, like on the top of the second page where it is to acquire blighted properties, which I know we had a discussion on today and agree with that, but without a definition or a plan of what the... What they consider blighted properties, to take someone's property to what they deem new development opportunities or new green space, you know, I disagree with.
That's fair enough. Ms. Zirinsky.
Right. We were already talking today about mandates that are largely unfunded and things that the state decides that they want to do, but they don't necessarily have the money for. This is a plan that's dependent on a severance tax that doesn't exist. We do have Act 13 drilling fees that we do still have money from, but we don't have anything to fund this. So, by supporting this, you're supporting severance tax, the implementation of a severance tax. And I will not be supporting a severance tax because I think that makes us more dependent on a fossil fuel that we should be moving away from in the 21st century, if that's what you really want to accomplish. I'm all for flood mitigation. I'm all for MS4. I think we have to find another way to do that than being dependent on a fossil fuel that's caused so much damage in this state already.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to say on this resolution?
And actually, just add one thing. You have a good point about... I think it also, it takes, you know, taking it out of the impact fee of the municipalities that get it. It's much like the casino money that we, you know, that's switched back over to the state to disseminate, you know, where they want it to go to versus the municipalities that are touched, you know, directly by these, so...
And we've actually talked about this in the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee. And there are a number of people on that committee who would prefer that the Act 13 money goes to the properties and the townships and communities that are directly impacted. I mean, we all benefit from that money in the state, but those areas are adversely impacted and feel those impacts every day and we still, in this county, benefit from that money.
Well, let me just say, in fairness to Mr. McGee, he's chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee. This resolution was given to us by DCED. They want us to support it. So, the council has the right to either support it or not support it. So, I just wanted to build it and write this up and...
Well, this was brought out in our committee meeting and I didn't hear as much of a debate as the committee meeting. I actually thought it would probably pass and be supported, so I guess we'll see when the vote comes.
All right. Is there any other discussion, debate, or questions on this resolution? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
No.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
No.
Mrs. Ferraro.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of five to three.
Okay. Now we'll move on. All right. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Mr. McGee, if you're up for it, this is yours too.
Yep. Just making sure Peg's one and everything's good.
I don't want you to get hammered again.
No, it's good. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved... Be it hereby resolved by the County of Northampton that the substantial amendment for the fiscal year 2014 Annual Action Plan is hereby approved. Number two, that it is of the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out of the community development activities with federal financial assistance and that the county executive and the Department of Community and Economic Development are authorized to execute and file the substantial amendment for $81,544.41 in unallocated and unspent fiscal year 2014 CDBG funds to fund the following new activities. A, CD 1401 Light Guard Crosswalk Installation. The county will reallocate $18,000 in fiscal... In fiscal year 2014, unused CDBG funds to a new activity. Light Guard Crosswalk Installation, an in-road warning light, and RRFB Lighted Crosswalk System for a total budget of $18,000. The second one is CD 1402 Blight Study. The county will reallocate $50,000 in fiscal year 2014 unused CDBG funds to a new activity, Northampton County Blight Study, for a total of $50,000. And CD 1403 General Administration. The county will reallocate $13,544.41 in fiscal year 2014 of unused CDBG funds to a new activity, General Program Administration, for a total budget of $13,544.41. And that the county executive is hereby authorized to provide assurance and/or certifications as required by housing, urban development, and also provide any additional documents that may be requested.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to three.
Okay. Now we'll move on. All right. Next, we have the consideration of a resolution approving the substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Mr. McGee, if you're up for it, this is yours too.
Yep. Just making sure Peg's one and everything's good.
I don't want you to get hammered again.
No, it's good. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved... Be it hereby resolved by the County of Northampton that the substantial amendment for the fiscal year 2014 Annual Action Plan is hereby approved. Number two, that it is of the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out of the community development activities with federal financial assistance and that the county executive and the Department of Community and Economic Development are authorized to execute and file the substantial amendment for $81,544.41 in unallocated and unspent fiscal year 2014 CDBG funds to fund the following new activities. A, CD 1401 Light Guard Crosswalk Installation. The county will reallocate $18,000 in fiscal year 2014 unused CDBG funds to a new activity, Northampton County Blight Study, for a total of $50,000. And CD 1403 General Administration. The county will reallocate $13,544.41 in fiscal year 2014 of unused CDBG funds to a new activity, General Program Administration, for a total budget of $13,544.41. And that the county executive is hereby authorized to provide assurance and/or certifications as required by housing, urban development, and also provide any additional documents that may be requested.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
Mr. Deetz.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
And Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll go on to consideration of a resolution supporting legislation opposing House Bill 509. Ms. Zirinsky, would you please introduce this?
I sure will.
Read as much as you feel you have to.
I won't read the whole thing because I'm hoping that you did. But I'll start with the "now therefore." Now therefore be it hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that HB 509 does not recognize the regional nature of the problem nor addresses the reasons for lengthy permit review times in some parts of the Commonwealth and should be opposed. Be it further resolved, Northampton County Council believes the redundancies in this legislation is outlined about making its passage further unnecessary. Be it further resolved, this legislation, which shortens agency timeframes for review, does not establish timeframes for a third-party reviewer. Be it further resolved, that legislation does not provide additional funding for the training and implementation of a third-party review process nor does it define the public review process. Be it further resolved, these timeframes could disallow consideration of legitimate concerns raised during the public commenting period. It's important not to lose sight of the fact that the NPDES permit reviews are for the protection of the public interest.
are important in water quality, soil erosion, and those things that the NPDES looks at. So it's important that we have the proper timeframes and we're not fast-tracking things through and pushing them through just because developers want to get into the land fast or because other people want to utilize the land for whatever reasons. So we need a proper permitting process. And that's what the Conservation District is asking that we oppose this legislation.
Go ahead, Ms. Kuzic.
Just a question. Didn't we approve a fee schedule that for additional fee, they can have an expedited process?
That was a different thing. That was a different thing altogether.
How was it different?
Yeah.
For this part?
I guess my question is, if we already have an expedited process that we have in place, what is, would this law change, affect the expedited process and deny us the revenue that we currently have from our expedited process?
That is a good question, Mr. Kuzic. And a question I do not have an answer for. I wish Sharon Pletchon was here for this.
What's this?
We don't know that, but it's logical.
Ms. Zierinski? Ms. Zierinski, am I correct? This was, this resolution was suggested to you by, I'm assuming, the Conservation?
By Sharon Pletchon, yes.
Would you consider possibly...
Requesting her comment in this?
Well, we could, we could do something which puts this on the table.
Yes.
I make a motion, we table this resolution.
Second.
No debate. Call for the vote.
No.
Second.
Yes.
Peg and Lori in the same breath.
Peg and Lori, take your pick.
Go ahead, girl.
Hold on. Okay. Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zierinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Passed us by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Very good. Next, we have consideration of Article 13 Contract, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. The Pennsylvania Counties Risk Pool, Mr. Warner, would you please do the honors?
Certainly. Thank you. Now therefore it be resolved, the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to awarding contract, the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania for property and liability insurance. So moved.
Thank you. Are there any questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
And Ms. Zierinski?
Yes.
Passed us by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay. Is there any other new business that any members of council wish to discuss? Seeing none? Are there any council committee reports anyone has? Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
We just had the Human Services Committee meeting prior to this meeting, and we discussed the realignment of the SAP program. A new provider was selected by RFP, and clarification was given that counseling is not necessarily going away, but that the county was no longer paying for counseling services, and they're paying for SAP services, and that counseling will be given or referred by other means. Greystale was discussed as well, and retention was an issue with Greystale as per usual. The other meeting that I, oh no, sorry, that's a liaison. That's it. That's it for Human Services. I believe the next meeting is going to be July 18th. Is that the Thursday? I don't want to have the wrong date. July 18th at 3:30 PM because we're not going to do it Fourth of July week.
Okay. Are there any other committee reports? Mr. McGee and then Ms.?
Economic Development met tonight, and we, we had a, the blight folks come in, and they were, they gave a really good presentation to the board with the outcome of their report. And the county interjected, the county executive interjected, and they're going to see there's some county tools that can be done. There are some tools they brought into the municipal, the municipalities, the cities, the boroughs. And it's a, it's a good program, and I'm glad we did it. And I think we're the first ones between the two counties. The Planning Commission was here as well, and they were involved in it. So a lot of this stuff's going to get transferred to a website and/or onto the Planning Commission. And also, I think Mark, Mr. Hartney said there you might have a website for getting the information out to the public.
Thank you. Ms. Zierinski, you had a report?
I have a liaison report.
Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none?
Well, the ad hoc committee, would you like me to report?
Whatever you want to call it. Just go ahead and give your report.
So the ad hoc committee on industrial hemp met last Tuesday at 9:30 AM at Wegmans, and it's a nice open space there.
That's a plug.
They recycle. It's good. So anyway, the point is, we met there, and we came up with an idea that we have to do a little bit more education with farmers. I received the list. There's five different farmers in Northampton County who've gotten permits. We'll be reaching out to them, trying to figure out how we can support them. The one farm, there were two farmers at the meeting who, one of which who has a permit for her 40 acres. She has purchased seeds from Canada, and she will be selling the product back to the seed company. We've identified other places that are selling plants right now to be put into the ground, obviously. But we're trying to figure out how best we can come up with a plan for education on how to farm. That seemed to be the identified need, how to do the permitting process, and then where farmers can go to process it. So we've come up with a couple goals, and we're moving along. And our next meeting is June 11th at 9:30 AM at Wegmans upstairs. Yeah.
So you're not using Mr. Warner's sources, his seeds he had talked about?
No, those are, those are different. We're not using those.
Okay. It's another discussion.
Yeah, that's another discussion. Okay. So that's my community report. My liaison report is for farmland.
Yes.
16,427.57 acres have been preserved on 196 farms. They're moving through the 2019 with the first 10 farms. They're, they've approved the ranking, and they've been updating with surveys and things like that. The one thing that was discussed, that they thought they might need some help from council with, is they wanted to know if there was any grant system for conservation purposes to preserve farms, or for preserve farmlands that have been affected by runoff. Specifically, there is an organic CSA that has experienced runoff from a horse farm that is impacting the CSA's organic farm, which is preserved. So...
Sounds like a private...
Well, so they're wondering if there is...
Private legal matter.
Okay. Well, I guess Roger Unink had said, the taxpayer, what the taxpayer preserve deserves to be maintained and protected. And he's wondering, whose responsibility is that if we're catching water from 45 acres away, and it's eroding, and the soil is moving from one property to another with all this, whatever's on it, sludge or manure or whatever you get from horses, which I guess is manure, right? Moving on to your CSA, is there any protection that could be used to make sure that that runoff is redirected from the CSA?
If Maria, it's not, Maria Benzone is not aware of it. My guess is it's not within the farmland preservation statute.
Oh, okay. Well, this was brought up at a meeting where she, she was on vacation.
Okay.
So bring it up to Maria.
Yeah. If it's, if it's in the statute, Maria will know that. We'll research it.
Okay.
But my instinct is that it would be a private legal matter.
Yeah, I guess you're saying it's not, if it's not covered under the current legislation.
But if they were, if they were successful, it's potential damage. So...
Right.
May I ask a question then?
Ms. Kuzic?
Is that something that the Conservation District has taken a look at?
Well, they're, well, so they're referring it to the Conservation District as well. But the kind of, the kind of rain and the flooding that we've been getting, we're going to see a lot more of this on preserved farms and just farms in general in Northampton County. So it's an issue that we have on our radar on both farmland preservation and the Conservation Districts.
Thank you. Any other reports?
None good.
Your end. Any other liaison reports?
I have, oh, go ahead, Bill.
No, you go.
No, you go, Ms. Heffner.
Well, I have two. I actually have three, but I'll keep them short. I went to the Mental Health, Early Intervention Developmental Disabilities Board meeting this week. A couple of things that, the Haven House project, which is a collaboration between the Mental Health Unit and Greystale, is surpassing everyone's expectations. As you heard briefly tonight, there's 69 individuals that are involved in it. I think they, we're hoping they'd get 20 when they launch the project. But what that means is that folks that are at Greystale that have identified mental health issues are being met with, identified, staff's being trained to handle them, and it's turning into a reduction of hospitalizations for those folks because people are learning how to manage them better. So, and it just keeps growing. So I've asked them to come and present to us later in the year at Human Services. But I just think it's a great way, when people partner, that things get done. Early Intervention identified that they are getting more and more referrals, and it's, it's just like in the hundreds every year of small children that need services. And issues that come up, what we talked about is that children that are born to drug-addicted parents are getting identified at onset. And so, you know, we're looking at, does mental health bring the money? Does drug and alcohol bring the money? And as we know, the state doesn't marry the silos. I think this is an opportunity for us to continue discussions to get them to start to marry the silos because these kids are affected in both areas. So that was just something, it was no solutions, but just good discussion. They're great people, and they're doing hard work. I went to the Drug and Alcohol Board earlier, or last month, and we have four places already throughout the county for addiction folks to go to. I forget the exact term. It escapes me.
Recovery center.
Recovery center, thank you. I'm a little bogged here. But we have a fifth one that's opening, and it's more geared toward families and family programs. And that's opening, I believe the grand opening is the last Friday of this month. But there's a woman named Brandon Miller, whose project, I guess with the loss of her own child, has really sparked interest, and she's interested in working with families. And she's also collaborated with a couple of the other folks that have done, I think August 31st every year, they do a big candlelight vigil, but they had to move their space. They're getting it at Arts Quest this year. Like, it's, they got a lot of donations, and so there's just a lot of very positive energy around this stuff. And these people are committed to this labor of love. And the last fund liaison report I have is about the GPA. So, how can I make this short? The GPA sought some legal advice because the bench, the milestones and the benchmarks weren't, weren't being met. We had a milestone payment due on May 31st. And so we have this contract that we thought we could do nothing about, but it appears as a result of our legal advice that we do. And so I think the GPA is in the process of tightening things up and clarifying things, and I guess sort of trying to hold the Krieger to the fire a little better. And so the last milestone payment was not made because they did not meet the benchmarks. I mean, there's, and Charles can jump in and support anytime because he speaks bridge way better than I do. He speaks bridge. But like basically, the update at this point is we have four bridges with final acceptance as of today. We have six or five under construction, and we only, and 16 in design phase. We have about four or five bridges. We were supposed to have 11 done by the end of this year. Did I get that number right? We're not even close. And there's like absolutely stopped work on several projects because the creek was too high?
Mm-hmm.
Because it rained. Stream obstruction. So there's, you know, there's, so the game plan is going to stop. The GPA is committed to enforcing the contract. And so we'll see where it goes.
Can I ask you a question?
You can. If I can answer it, I'd be happy.
No, I'm just curious. And since it's GPA's contract, if we baked the milestone payments, we haven't made the milestone payment. Krieger obviously isn't going to be happy that we didn't make the milestone payment. So what happens if he just stops working totally on what he's working on now? Does the GPA then have to jump in? Are you going to become the force that, I mean, there could be some figures that go to loggerheads over this.
Well, I think the difficulty is, I think that work had already been stopped on the project. So I think that happened before the milestone payment was even due. Like, there's just inertia on several projects.
So there's five under construction now, you said?
Can I, it's the project manager for the GPA, so it would be helpful if he speaks more bridge than I do.
I mean, we're at the end of the, but it would be helpful for me at least, not by anybody else where we're at right now.
Bridge 143 was at a stream restriction, so they stopped work there to meet the stream restriction. The bush kill had risen, and the, the Coffre Dam that they had constructed was less than what they're doing now, and that was washed away. So they had stopped working there entirely, not recognizing that the bush kill is a pretty active stream. So no work had been going on. To the extent that there's work on five bridges being done, most of that work is punch list, so they have not, and that work is ongoing but has not been completed. So we do have, as Lori said, there are four bridges that have been accepted. There are another three that are facing acceptance, two that they've started but have not completed, and there should have been seven, 11 done at this point, but there are only seven that have been substantially completed.
Let me ask you this, Ms. Zierinski, because you're a member of the GPA as well. The not paying, and this is what I just need to, I want to understand going forward. We have a milestone payment. We didn't make it. Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, is this, this is going to be, I know, where I, I'm just curious where we stand. I know the contract is the GPA and Krieger.
Yes.
Our part is, we pony up the money. We have said, we're not ponying up, or has the GPA said, we don't want the county to pay the money?
We have, we have not certified for the county, to request the county to pay the money.
Oh, okay.
It's not, the county has not taken any action. The GPA has taken the action.
Oh, okay. So now I'm, so, so the GPA is saying to Krieger, you're not getting paid. We're not making this milestone payment?
No. No, no.
So what are, what's your reasoning for not making the milestone payment or certifying it?
Can I answer that? I think if I, do you have any, that Mr., the Benish Agency has to sign off on punch list items, and they did not sign off because the items were not completed.
They haven't met the milestones, and part of them getting the milestone payment is to meet the milestones. Benish has to certify that that's the case, and then the GPA would then take action at that time. But Benish is not.
Okay. So, so you, as the GPA, the GPA as body, did not see, get the punch list?
Yeah, there is ongoing discussions going with them. So this is...
And, and you know, and you know, I mean, there's a couple phases here. One is the phase of wanting to get the bridges done, and getting them done in a reasonable amount of time, even if it's not the exact timeframe. The other phase is, as, as I know, the executive and I talked about it last year a couple times, is at some point, the county's vulnerability in terms of getting yanked into a possible lawsuit by the contractor as a party to a lawsuit because he's not getting money.
Yeah, this is, this is entirely between the GPA and the Krieger. It has nothing to do with the county.
Okay. I'm just, I don't want to see any $700-an-hour lawyers having to get involved.
The other thing is, we took a few bridges out, and I believe some of them we had already done, like Bridge 15, but we just formalized that the other day. So that's why you saw that in the paper, even though we have talked about it and talked about it. So it seemed redundant, but it was just that we had taken formal action to be in line with what we were advised to do. And then the last thing that we discussed, which was at the very end after we got done with Bridge Speak, is that we did discuss the Glendon Hotel, and we did advise that the DCED would take up a study. And I'm trying to think, what's the word again?
Reuse.
Reuse study. So we didn't, we didn't take it on, but they're just going to say, see if there's any potential for reuse, if there's any opportunity to turn it into affordable housing. If the answer is no, then the answer is no. But the GPA said, yes, go forth and see if there's any opportunity.
All right. Is there anything?
Fun on a Tuesday morning.
Sounds like it. All right. Any other liaisons? Mr. McGee, you had something.
Last Thursday?
Yes, sir.
I was actually here. Forgot it was the fifth week of the month, so I was supposed to be at planning, which I had plenty of time to get over to planning. So, Planning Commission was pretty interesting last Thursday. They are talking about, actually, the Transportation Committee was, gave a report on the Walk, Roll, Lehigh Valley Initiative, Active Transportation Plan. They're going to have a public engagement launch event, June 12th, in the city of Bethlehem, intersection of Broad and New Streets, from 3:30 to 5:30. Should be pretty interesting. And a multimodal working group, June 26th, at the American on Wheels at 3:00 PM. They had a bunch, there was some other information there, but I'm going to keep my report brief.
All right. Thank you. Any other liaison? Seeing none? Is there any other new business? I think I already asked that. All right. Council Clerk's report?
Nothing.
Solicitor?
Nothing.
Call for adjournment?
Let's have them look again.
Second. Those in favor? We're adjourned. That wasn't too bad.
It was pretty good.
Yeah. I mean, you know.
65 minutes, not bad.
Yeah. We had a fair amount of stuff on the agenda. I'm glad that guy wasn't here to hear that.